Five items with which we went into closed session, two items under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven eleven A three. Acquisitions slash disposition of publicly owned property. One item under Virginia Code two point two three seven eleven A five, discussion concerning prospective businesses where no previous announcement has been made. And one item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven eleven A seven, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to actual probable litigation concerning zoning violations. And one item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven eleven A eight, consultation with legal counsel regarding a specific legal matter requiring legal advice from such counsel. So move.
Second.
May I have roll call please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Aye.
Mr. Claus.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Uh, like to entertain any modifications to public session? Bearing none, we'll move on to item seven, like to welcome any guests or visitors that we may have online. Always would like to invite as much participation as possible. Thank you for being here with us. And we'll move on to item eight, uh, for the consent agenda and I would like to entertain a motion for the August third, uh, meeting minutes. So move.
Okay.
Roll call please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Aye.
Mr. Claus.
Aye.
And Mr. Reese.
Aye.
I'd like, we'll move on to item number nine, under public hearings, uh, for the appropriation of grant funds from Ja- for James Hardy direct injection project. Um, if we could start off with a staff report, please.
Uh, yes, sir, uh, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, uh, this is the last piece of the funding that is required for us to move forward with the direct injection project for, uh, James Hardy. Uh, while James Hardy is obviously a beneficiary, so is the entire sewer system, uh, with the upgrade and direct injection project. We do have, uh, several grants, uh, that have been received, uh, from both the E D A, the Appalachia Regional Commission and the Department of Housing and Community Development. There was a missing piece, uh, just under four hundred thousand dollars. Uh, we, uh, contacted James Hardy and they agreed to make, uh, the contribution of three hundred ninety-two thousand, uh, that you see in this, uh, accompanying, uh, appropriation resolution in order for us to have the total amount that's required for the project. So with this last piece, uh, we will be able to go ahead, initiate the design contract and move forward with the construction. So we're very pleased that James Hardy has stepped forward to be a participant in the project financially as well as benefiting in other ways.
Thank you.
Do you want to go out for bid? Or we have already, or we just?
No, we have not gone out for bid. We, um, actually with the understanding, because we had to go through this project, this process of having it appropriated, we did go ahead and sign the engineering contract for design. And that is underway. Uh, we hope to have that done, uh, before the end of the year and then we would put it out for bid at that time, Mr. Penn.
Are there any other council comments or questions? Hearing none, and we'll open the public hearing for the James Hardy direct injection project. Any comments online, Jordan?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, we will close the public hearing on the James Hardy project. Alright, does council have any other further comments, questions? Alright, uh.
Mr. Vice Mayor, I'm sure we have approved, uh, approved resolution twenty twenty-one dash forty-one as per.
Roll call please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. East.
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe.
Aye.
Mr. Claus.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Alright, let's move on to the update on the comprehensive plan. Will you blow your deal, thank you.
And while Brady's gonna be giving you an update, we want this to be the jumping off point for you all to give us your ideas about what you would like to see in the future of the town, uh, so that we can incorporate those ideas and suggestions as the comprehensive plan goes forward. So that's why we put you down on the floor here and hopefully a work session kind of mode so that we have some exchange of thoughts and ideas.
Good evening, members of council, uh, we have been working on our comprehensive plan update for several months now. We've been working towards completion of the engagement phase. This is the phase where we do most of the data collection, uh, in collaboration with the New River Valley Regional Commission. Uh, we've been working with Afi Finkin, who is a, a great representative from the regional commission on this process. Um, the two documents that I passed out to you, one is the paper version of the community survey. Uh, there's an online version of the survey, the online version, uh, does have branching questions, so it's a, a little more detailed than the paper, uh, version. Branching questions are if you respond a certain way to a question, it'll actually give another supplemental question to find out some more information. So that's not available here, um, but this survey is live and it is on our engagement website, which is one of the tools we've been using during this engagement phase, which is, uh, located at engagenrv.org and then you can click on the Town of Pulaski, um, comprehensive plan project thumbnail. Uh, the other document that I gave to you is some preliminary responses from our survey efforts. This far in the survey data collection, uh, process, we've received two hundred and seventy-three survey responses. Uh, and as you see, there's some of the, the early highlights, um, that are, that have been, uh, received, uh, feedback wise from our residents and then, uh, also some non-residents. Um, and the, this highlight lists priorities, um, needs for improvement and development, and then also a little blurb about, um, housing. We've, uh, sorry, excuse me, we have, we've had two hundred and seventy-three, um, survey responses, but I do wanna highlight that two hundred and eighty-nine people have responded to one or more of the engagement tools. We are still pushing the survey, uh, we, um, will do one more social media announcement, which will be our third announcement. And we will also be including another insert in the water bill that will direct people to take the survey. And our goal would be, uh, to get to near about, about four hundred responses. And we hope to wrap this survey collection process, um, up by the beginning to middle of September. Another tool that we've been using for, uh, engagement is, uh, having working group meetings. Uh, I reached out to multiple residents and compiled a working group of individuals that are representative of the community population. Uh, it features two business owners, one nonprofit manager, one entrepreneur, one architect, one senior citizen, and one recent high school graduate. We have met twice so far and really what that, those meetings are for is to discuss, uh, key issues that that group thinks that the town should consider during, uh, the comprehensive plan update, especially in regards to the element formation and elements are your key topics within the comprehensive plan. Uh, we've also had a department head meeting with the town engineer, uh, Bill Pedego, and, uh, extensively reviewed the infrastructure needs, including roadways, uh, and water and sewer. And then lastly, through this process, we've just started to review, uh, some inconsistencies between our zoning map and future land use map. Uh, the zoning map, of course, is the current, uh, breakdown of the zoning districts throughout the town. The future land use map is what we have, uh, projected that we'd like that land to be used for in the future. And as you know, if there's land that's intended to be used for, um, commercial use, uh, such as business and retail, but it's currently zoned industrial, that's an inconsistency between the zoning map and future land use map. So we've, we've been reviewing those, um, inconsistencies and discussing those with the planning commission members. Um, and then also we have gone through the zoning ordinance and reviewed it and completed a strike through edit, uh, that includes grammatical corrections and potential proposed amendments. Uh, the planning commissioners have received a copy of that document and they are reviewing that, um, at home and we will further discuss that at the next planning commission meeting. So the planning commission, um, has been working hard on this comprehensive plan update, so is, uh, Afi from the regional commission. And then I've been, uh, assisting alongside as the staff representative through this process. Um, and we've been completing a lot of aspects of this engagement phase and hopefully we will complete the engagement phase no later than September fifteenth and can move on to the next phase of the cop plan. Uh, with that being said, are there any initial questions for me before we move into discussing, um, you all's developmental goals uh, that you would like the planning commission and staff to consider while completing the comprehensive plan update?
It's one process question, when you're talking about the inconsistencies in the future use of the zoning map, i- is that gonna be, is that driving towards updating the zoning map so that it, it is consistent? Or I mean, how is that, and, and how does that work as far as just like, if you own an industrial property and we'd like to convert it to commercial, do we rezone that? Do we let them, how does that all process, I mean, without getting into too much into the weeds?
One of the main reasons you do that is just for awareness, to, to be aware that, okay, your future land use map is not currently consistent with, with your zoning map. As far as initiating any type of rezoning, of course, that would have to go through a process. And, uh, according to my knowledge, the town could not just rezone a private property, is that correct, Ms. Darling?
It would be, um, a public process where, um, actually at other communities, uh, we have notified every property owner whether or not their property stayed the same zoning.
Right.
Or whether it was planned for a rezoning.
Okay.
Uh, so that there is that public notification process that is required under, excuse me, under the state code. Um, then as properties become available and people come in, let's say developers come in and they look at a particular area and they see that our proposed land use in the future, you know, is different than the current, then that helps the planning commission to then look at those rezonings.
Right.
Uh, because there is a plan, it's just not somebody coming in, um, you know, off the street saying, well, I want this done this way. It's also a way for the planning commission to, um, have some backing to disapprove rezonings if they realize that the plan is such for the future that it would not be compatible with what is planned in the long term. And an interesting part of all of this may be, uh, Brady, your example of what we're talking about with the former Pulaski Furniture area.
Mm-hmm.
Why don't you share with them some of that, which is, um, some of the broad brush thinking about how you would redo a part of your community in the future?
So one of the goals set out in the twenty sixteen comprehensive plan was to seek out potential adaptive redevelopment, uh, for the Pulaski Furniture complex. As you all know, that's eighteen acres of land in the heart of our downtown, uh, and it has over a million square feet or approximately a million square feet of buildings, uh, building space on that property. Uh, as I came on and reviewed the comprehensive plan and saw that, I began to look for possible redevelopment avenues, um, that we could consider as we move forward. And as Ms. Darling mentioned, that's an I two or a heavy industrial zone property. So moving forward, if we were to try to redevelopment, redevelop it and include it more into like our downtown B three district or even have some maybe possible residential component, you would have to rezone. Now, if you did rezone a property through the process that Ms. Darling mentioned, it doesn't mean that the current owner would have to stop their use. They would maintain that non-conforming use, um, uh, or non-conforming permitted use on the property. So, but the projects that we've sort of looked at and what we've seen in other localities, and I'll give you a couple of names, one is Camp North End outside of Charlotte, and another is Mill Number One outside of Durham. Camp North End was a seventy-six acre industrial complex that two developers out of New York City purchased and they redeveloped it into what I like to call a sub-community and a community, a place where you can live, work, and play all in that one complex. And that's something that I think the Pulaski Furniture complex could one day become, a place where you could have loft apartments and places of residence. You could have shops, uh, boutiques, retail places, but also businesses because of the amount of square, square footage. And then also you could have recreation areas, outdoor green space, concert venues, and then even, uh, business, businesses such as breweries or distilleries or maybe some wine tasting venues. So what you could create in that eighteen acres is a sub-community in our community where someone could come and live in an apartment and work in a, at a nearby business or shop or a store and also attend a concert or, or use the green space or, or have, uh, some type of evening outing there as well. And Camp North End is a cool map for that, that we could look at, um, as so, as, as well as Mill Number One. So that's sort of a good project and I'm glad that Starling brought that up, that in the future we could consider.
But we had, the interesting part about that is we had some very preliminary, um, conversations with developers who kind of like that idea. Yeah, it takes a lot of money, so that obviously, you know, like the New York people went, uh, to the Carolinas. But you can't just look at the buildings and their current zoning and plan for the future that way. You have to, you know, kind of open your eyes and say, okay, well, what, if I could repaint this picture, what would I like to see there in the future? And that's really part of what this whole comprehensive plan process is about. And you're actually required by state code to update your comprehensive plan every five years, we're behind on that. But in doing that, that's why we wanna open up your eyes and the eyes of the community to say, well, what, what would we do differently if we could? And that becomes kind of the vision for the future. And so as we talk to developers, as we look at where we put roads or where we put emphasis on parks or other kinds of things, we keep in mind that that's what we want that area to be and it won't happen in five years. But it has to start someplace and it starts with that visioning process that we hope the community is going through to say, what do you like about this community? What would you like to have different in the future and where would you wanna put it?
And, and I just would like to repeat that, that's why we, we spent such time on this engagement phase and really been trying to push the survey and, uh, have meaningful intentional working group meetings is this process is all about receiving citizen and resident feedback and making sure that we are hearing their concerns and also working towards a direction that, uh, is aligned with their vision for the community. And that's where you guys come in as their representatives, of course, is to also, um, be, you know, um, mouthpieces for them, but also cast visions too that maybe the community might not think of, that we can try to see, see as a way to reimagine our future. And I think that's something here in the town is, a lot of the small rural towns such as ours, we're not probably gonna recapture our past, but we can reimagine our future and that's just something that we'll have to do together through this process and that's a key part of the comprehensive plan update.
I think it's, uh, you know, for me, just in broad spectrum, it's kinda like, it's like what Mr. Hagan asked for on, on the property on Bob Y. He was trying to make sure that the restrictions were loosened as much as possible about what could be done there to open up as many possibilities of what could be done there. And, and just like what you men- mentioned, a lot of, you know, the, you know, developmental side of some of these communities, there, there is no, like, just an industrial side or just a business side or just a residential side, you know, when you look at the downtown areas, it's, the same site could be all three, you know, at some level. And to, you know, it, it would, you know, obviously with intentional effort, I think the, the effort is to make sure that it's, yeah, as much as possible in any of these locations. If we've, you know, still eyeballed them and looked at them like, well, that, that has to be a furniture factory, you know, then, you know, we, we, I think our plan needs to erase that. You know, and, you know, and move it in a, I mean, every one of these things, you know, says we're looking for housing, every conversation, we, you know, every property that, you know, or a development that can engage more housing and residential side of it, obviously it's huge and, um, all the conversations of Montgomery County and Blacksburg about, you know, the need for, you know, how much, you know, how much potential we have for pulling that, you know, residency this our way or, or maybe even business for small business or light industry this way is, you know, is there a way our zoning and plan could mesh up with that to kinda have that door wide open? You know, I mean, if it looks controlled from the outside, we'd need to fix that, you know.
Well, and, and I agree with that, I think, uh, you know, our comprehensive plan, there's, and it, and your survey, uh, results really hit on it. Um, development of existing structures and, or redevelopment. And then the other one is housing just in general. So we really, uh, you know, I think if you, if you, if we focus long-term on redevelopment of vacant buildings and what have you, if we identify potential growth, new growth for housing wherever it may exist, um, whether it's inter- individual lots scattered throughout the town or, or whether there's a chunk of land that, that would allow that, uh, then that, those, those types of things need to be identified. I think if, if we focus on that, uh, in our comprehensive plan, then you know, some of the other stuff that are, that are mentioned with dining and entertainment, that stuff starts to come, you know, after, after, you know, as you, as you create, uh, more living opportunities and redo, uh, you know, redevelop some buildings. And so I think with activity, you get, you get more interest and you get more activity, so. But, you know, I will say, just what, what, the, the survey responses that you receive, really, I mean, it, it captures, uh, I think it captures everything. I, I just see the priority as being, uh, from our standpoint, from my standpoint, uh, housing and, and redevelopment of existing buildings.
And if I'm gonna pick up that piece on housing, I mean, I think one thing we need to be thinking about and how we do it, it matters, is that, you know, we have X number of areas of developable land in the, in the town and there's not a whole lot more of it, I don't think. I mean, there's some bigger chunks, but I do think we need to have a conversation about density. Cause I think one thing that these bigger makes these developments do well is they, they put a lot more housing in the same square footage, you know, and I think that's one thing, if we're really serious about growing our population, we need to identify areas where we allow, you know, whether it's multifamily, accessory dwelling units and make it as easy as possible, you know, make those, you know, more, if, if we need to make them as of right as opposed to, you know, a special use exception or something like that, you know, I think that's the way to, cause either we're, we're gonna be drawing people in or people are gonna be pushed out and I think that's one way we can help draw people in is by, you know, and you can have more affordable and more, more expansive housing options if you make it so that people can build on the same lot, a two-family house or a three-family house or a six-family house. Um, you know, that, you know, you, you maximize the limited sort of acreage that we have. Cause we have all, we have acreage, but not all of it's easily buildable, not all cheaply buildable. Um, and then the other thing I was thinking about from reading all this and thinking about the, the stuff you mentioned is that I've, I've sort of come to the conclusion that we have kind of chunks of town that if you, that aren't sort of connected to each other. I mean, you know, Route eleven and Route ninety-nine kinda split, and, and Bob Y kinda split up the town. Um, and I wonder if there's ways, you know, that, you know, in the infrastructure category, adding more sort of sidewalks and ways to get around, if it might encourage people to do more of that dining and shopping in town if they can, if they feel like it's, it's a, it's something they can walk to or something like that. You know, I don't, I don't know what the, what the sort of practicality of it is, but there may be some simple things we can do, whether they're a crosswalk across Route eleven or something like that that can encourage sort of cross neighborhood, um, interaction that, that might, you know, and the more people you see downtown and the more people you see on the sidewalks, I think the more likely you are to get out of your car. That's just my sort of perspective on it, though.
Can I throw something out to you all that's probably gonna be seen as heresy? But what about changing one-way roads to two-way? In the downtown, I've seen how it can produce significant benefits to retail. Um, and we're gonna, we're gonna be in the next year carrying up, uh, Main Street to put in water lines that have the capacity, uh, to provide water through our sprinkler system as we have more of this downtown retail and upper floor, uh, living. Um, and it, you know, the fact that we have one-way traffic on two different streets in the downtown, uh, does limit, um, I think, how those areas develop. Um, and I know it's probably not a popular idea, but you've heard a couple of other people or one gentleman in particular talk about, uh, trying to bring more people downtown. And I just don't know where, as a community, we stand on that, but, um.
I think it's been discussed a hundred times.
It, it has, and, uh.
You probably, you guys obviously have more experience here in the details of those conversations, but it seemed like at, at those times, it always closed out with the cost of doing so was prohibited. Well, and I think, I think when we had these conversations before, you know, we didn't have the growth opportunity that we necessarily have now. Um, you know, a lot of positive things have happened, I know, since we've had that discussion, a lot of positive investment. I think it becomes more of an issue or more of, you know, certainly, certainly worth considering at this point as opposed maybe in the past. Uh, and I know people have a lot of energy about it, uh, I don't fully recall which way it, it went, I think it maybe it was a fifty-fifty split, who knows? But I do know from living on one of those three one-way streets, um, number one, people go the wrong way all the time.
I actually just saw somebody go the wrong way down East Main Street this afternoon.
It happens all day long.
I found myself out there waving, hey, you're going the wrong way. But, uh, so it is confusing, that's my point. And it, it also directs people away from Main Street. So I, I think that's probably the biggest issue that I see is people can't find Main Street because they think they're on Main Street, they're on Third Street, but it doesn't look like Main Street, so they know something's wrong. So I, I think it's certainly worth having that, that public discussion again, I see.
Well, I mean, maybe it would be, would it be better, do you think people would benefit from having like a plan to react to? As opposed to necessarily like a, what if we, you know, because I feel like sometimes people are concerned about the details of it.
Well, so a- as I recall, Mr. Jeans, and I believe he had a, didn't he present a detail?
Well, he had a plan for some of it, I don't think he had a plan, or maybe I'm wrong.
No, I'm not.
He had a two-way, but he had a plan for the parking.
Not, not, not the, not the angle parking, I think he actually had a plan for the two-way that he did.
He, he did, for just for, but just for Main Street between Jefferson and Washington. I think that was the, that was the most recent plan.
Okay, but this, this was several years ago.
Oh, if there was one several years ago, then maybe there was, but, you know, he.
I think it was actually studied or some, at some small level, wasn't it?
There's more information out there, we should certainly.
Well, as you're talking about sidewalks and other kinds of things, I think you have to look at the road connectivity and the ease with which people can access. Uh, and, and candidly, in your downtown, you're gonna have a problem in the, in a few years as it relates to parking. And that's a good problem to have, cause it means you've got people coming in, into your area, uh, but it, on the other hand, we need to be thinking about that today for that parking need that is maybe four or five years from now, uh, and looking at what are potential locations or what are the policies that you as the governing body want to put in place to ensure that the parking that we do have, uh, is maximized.
You're, you're absolutely right with the, with what's going, getting ready to happen on Main Street. I think now is certainly the best time to, to understand where we're going there. And, and, you know, redevelopment being one of our key priorities, uh, that includes, that's a lot of Main Street, uh, if, you know, about seventy percent.
And Brady's experiencing a lot of interest in the downtown buildings, both by, uh, the owners who are wanting to get out of the business and sell their buildings as well as people who are coming in and, and looking at buildings, um, and usually for multiple purposes, you know, upper floor living and, and downtown retail. So I think it, it's coming and again, this is part of the discussion that, and I, I may be throwing some things out, you know, that people say, why? You know, she's lost her mind today. But we need to start thinking ahead for the success that you want this community to have and to be prepared for it. But we need to start thinking ahead for the success that you want this community to have, and to be prepared for it. In the same way that, while we have, uh, a great housing need, you know, and I preached that to you almost from the day that I came, we need diversified housing as much as housing, because not everybody wants a single-family home today. Um, and so to have that diversity, uh, becomes important. Uh, and, in a community that I was in some years ago now, that's the way we increase population. Was that we brought in housing, and we brought in the kind of housing choices that people were having to go to the county to get, because they weren't in the city. And when you started making them available, then they didn't have to look outside the community anymore.
I, I think since we, we want to serve Main Street anyway, the cost is enough, if we, if we're as mad as we are willing to. To, to, to mirror all to it anyway, then we'll do it.
Well, we have the water line money that, uh, we're going to be using the, uh, American Recovery Act funds, when we had planned to use, you know, our capital budget, and then we do have two grants that will come in behind that to do the repaving. So if there is any serious thought about it, now's the time to be planning for it. Not after we repaved it and then somebody come in three years later and say, okay, well now we might have two-way traffic.
I don't know that I've ever heard anybody necessarily speak negatively about it. I've heard people kind of brush it off, cause they're just, I guess they'd heard it so many times and heard it discussed. Probably that I've ever heard somebody necessarily say that they didn't like it for a particular reason, they just.
Yeah, I mean, I think people are used to two-way traffic. I mean, that's the way most of the streets are in town. And it certainly, as somebody who did move here once, found it somewhat confusing. Um, you know, it, it, it certainly, I think, unless, unless we get a big pushback from it, I mean, it sounds like there's, unless I'm just missing somebody, that it seems like there's broad support for, um, changing the, at least, you know, what, as, as we sort of redo things, to move in that direction, and then do a study for what the rest of East and Third Street and, and other stuff would look like.
We may have to actually make.
So many years it was, it was the.
We might have to make Third Street two-way temporarily when we tear up Main Street.
Oh, that's true.
And that might be a good parameter, uh, and that's exactly how, uh, I've done it in a couple other communities, start with one. In one case, we had a construction project that forced it, uh, in another, we just were bold and said we're gonna do it.
Um, and as I understand it, it was, the, the original reason, if you go back to the original reason for, for doing it the way it is now, is to keep, uh, large industrial, you know, truck, tractor trailers and stuff off of Main Street. It was to kind of divert that, the, you know, when we were heavy in the garment industry and, uh, and other, other large industrial, uh, businesses, we wanted to keep that traffic off of Main Street. And I think that's what drove that originally, which doesn't apply anymore, so.
Well, and there is a concern that as we get more, uh, restaurants, particularly in the downtown, and they have deliveries, you know, that you'll have, uh, larger vehicles come in, uh, in other communities, um, that's usually handled by limited delivery times. You know, so that, um, and it's something that is managed by organizations like Pulaski on Main, you know, if you've got a half a dozen of them, they decide when's the best delivery time and, and to monitor that, so it's not at your peak times, you know, when you've got traffic. So there are all kinds of considerations, and I know when you all were discussing, I guess it was Thirty-seven West Main, um, and the rezoning. You know, we talked about both the alley, you know, the use of the alley as the access point for those several apartments that were gonna be coming out, uh, to the rear, but also where were people going to park? And those are, again, the kind of things that we need to be thinking about today, not necessarily making it happen today, but planning for it, so that we have it in our capital budgets, or, uh, we look for grants and other opportunities to make those things happen. Or we get community consensus, that it's the right thing to do.
I've got, you know, two things, you know, thing about comprehensive plan that I haven't heard mentioned was, you know, I have, there's been a lot of discussion about the continued need for additional hotel space. You know, and, and, and what that could do for us, you know, as a community to, you know, to not have, people have to stay so far away that wanna be engaged in the community. I think that's, that's probably huge for, if we're talking about especially downtown development, you know, but just community development, to keep people engaged here when people are gathering and families are coming together and all that kind of stuff. It's, it's, we're pushing them away currently.
We're actually, uh, going to be commissioning a hotel stay, uh, for, uh, the town, uh, because I, I agree, um, that that's something that, as we become more successful, it's gonna be an even greater need.
Uh, and I know it hasn't been discussed recently, it was heavily discussed at one time, but from a comprehensive plan standpoint, I guess the thought of the discussions about boundary adjustment, you know, that's kind of, when we basically decide, hey, it's, it was not, not the time to think about that, but if we're talking about five years down the road, I think it's, needs to at least be a conscious choice to say, okay, for the next five years, we're not, that's not gonna be our drive. You know, um, which, you know.
There's one thing that we used to do, and we've gotten away from, uh, years ago, since it's been on here. We had one day a year where we had a, 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 uh, open meeting with council and business, and department heads. We headed out to Yuri Hospital there at one time, and we'll try, and we bring everybody together, uh, for an evening of meeting, to what is and what's not, what's gonna work, what's not gonna work. And, and I thought that was a very good thing, cause you had a lot of business people that actually on Main Street, you come in and said, you talked about the two-way, two-way traffic, we think if we had two-way traffic, we could, you know, X, and, and of course, some of us on here at the town, so I, I don't know why that would work, you know, but. And today, growing like, like we're taught growing, you know, that might be something we wanna look at. Maybe November, uh, can't get outside, is, is to plan a Saturday morning meeting. And just, uh, bring everybody that could come together and say, this is what our, uh, you know, this is what our plan looks like for five years, and what do you say?
Was that a kind of an open thing, Jamie, where anybody could come? Or was it an invitation thing that you tried to make sure that certain businesses came, or how, how was that working?
We, we, we had one, if I vaguely remember right, y'all correct me, well, he was here, and I think it was Ben. At one, it was just department heads and council. And it was at the Yuri Building, then the other we had it, like, at the train station, had the, the business people here. And you had some showed up, some didn't show up, so, I mean, it is what it is. Well, well, we just have, uh, a meeting for, uh, locations, like the south side, the north side, uh, in, in the core. They, they, they do a lot of, of, of things.
And I guess, again, just, I'll just pig for thought that, you know, one other thing I, you know, when we talk about five years out, that had been prominent conversation, that, you know, obviously, you know, our financial circumstances and realizing the efforts where it needed to be redirected in different places, but, uh, you know, the, you know, fire department and the public safety, or administration building, you know, thoughts if we're, you know, if, you know, if we're talking about, you know, rethinking where we are, or how we are, or, you know, and that kind of stuff, uh, you know, I, I think that at least needs to be, you know, up in consideration somewhere in there, um. Obviously, I think the development of the Pulaski Middle School, that seems, you know, that, that's realistic, you know, in a five-year period, but, you know, might be at least underway, not, maybe not.
Well, and, and maybe more broadly, just the redevelopment of buildings like that, you know, underused and, you know, whether it's Pulaski Furniture, Pulaski Middle School, or, you know, some of these other, you know, built iron sock building, you know, what, what if, you know, maybe identifying some of those, and, um.
Where does that traffic go, where's that?
Yeah, yeah, that, or, you know, and if, we're just like, we're at least zoning them, like, that's gonna be a more commercial, that's gonna be more residential, that's gonna be more, you know, making some choices about that kind of stuff, for the purposes of thinking, thinking about traffic and parking and, uh, infrastructure and those things, and identifying that. Um, I don't know, I don't know how you go about doing that, but I mean, you know.
Well, and so much of emphasis I, I was in here was on our parks. You know, almost every comment about what, you know, what's your favorite place was a, was a park. You know, and, you know, from a, you know, is there an intentional effort in, in a fi- in a, in a five-year plan of what we're trying to have accomplished, you know, with our parks?
And I, you know, I think it's, I think that's a good point, and it should be, I think. Um, and, you know, one of our greatest assets, you know, just like, just, it may not currently be an asset, but it could be in the future. When you talk about the old Pulaski Furniture, uh, area, you know, really focusing on, like you said, it's however many acres, eighteen acres. Eighteen acres in the, in the center of town, certainly needs to be the center, which, uh, which is what you're saying, center of our comprehensive plan. You know, something that we often overlook, we, we have Peak Creek running right through, uh, right through the middle of town, which if you look at, and I'm sure everybody in here at one point or another has stood on a bridge and just looked down at, across all the other bridges of Peak Creek, and it's really, on either end of that creek, uh, through this, through the main part of town, there's area that could be, you know, parks or picnic areas, or, and I think that's really important. And then to, uh, so I think the creek should be highlighted in whatever, you know, whatever we can do to that as an attraction. And back to what Mr. Reyes was saying, regarding a walking town, or, or a bike-riding town, trying to figure out how to connect those dots. For instance, we have the trail, we, we, we have the trail extension, which the New River Trail draws thousands and thousands of people here. Um, we have the extension from the train station, and you can go to Exaloy, um, you can go to Exaloy, but i- if you're not interested in going all the way to, on the Draper, you have to come back on the same, the same trail. It would be nice if you could loop that to somehow make it safe for bike travel, or even pedestrian travel, which is, I think.
Well, I mean, you know, now that there's that extension of the New River Trail out towards Chrysler, and it would be, I mean, I don't know how practical it is, but if you could, you know, think about creating a, a sort of around-the-town kind of trail. It could be both the pedestrian, bike, exercise, you know, all those things. It's, that's maybe more of five years from planning at least, cause I know it took them a while to build that extension to the New River Trail. But, you know, if we could connect that, and, you know, I mean.
But just little pieces, though. Just for instance, if, you know, when I've gone up that way to try and get back, uh, and there, there, there are some obstacles there, but, uh, that, that would be difficult. But just crossing the intersection there at, uh, where the old Lee Jean plant, uh, Lee Jeans building is, and, and, and the bank, it's a tricky intersection to cross. So if, if there was some way to just make that connect, you know, connect those areas, was, uh, would be helpful.
All right, come on, give us some more.
Well, and, and just recapping real quick, I'm taking, of course, uh, plenty of notes. Um, it really, a lot of these, a lot of your points have really centered around accessibility, uh, and I think that that's a major thing for any town right now, especially post-pandemic. People are looking for accessible areas that have ample amounts of space, that are outdoor, that they can enjoy. Um, and we can capitalize on that, because we have that to offer, uh, which is really great. Um, and then also, I think what's really exciting too, is seeing some of the progress we're, we're making. I know, uh, uh, Brooke, uh, Mr. Dawson, you mentioned the, the old schools, and it's really exciting to see, you know, the Kalfi School is being redeveloped. We have, uh, Claremont School is being redeveloped. Uh, la- last week, we, or the, the previous council meeting, we heard about the Pulaski County Middle School, I mean, the, the Pulaski Middle School, um, project. So we are seeing some of these old schools being developed, but it's definitely a task adaptively reusing buildings, and that's something from the economic development side, that has been really prevalent, is as we consider a lot of these adaptive reuse projects, they're very costly. Uh, and that's been something that is difficult when you, when you have this, uh, character, architectural-wise, that we have. A lot of towns, and I've been on meetings with other local, local economic developers, they're begging for the type of historic architecture that we have. Um, but as it's a blessing to have it, it's really costly to adaptively reuse it. Uh, bring it to current buildings, building code standards, put in restaurants, or apartments, or other type of businesses, and non-traditional buildings that weren't cer- suited for that, especially some of, some of our more industrial buildings. So that's been a challenge staff-wise that we've seen with developers. We've had tons of interest, it's just when you get down to looking at the cost of these projects, they are, um, very high, especially with what we've seen the last year and a half happen to the costs of, of building materials.
So this, this may be a little off subject, but I, I do have a question, that, um, regarding the historic tax credits. Obviously, I, I don't know what they currently are, or if they've even changed. But at one point, they were very signi- it was a significant amount of payback.
Forty-five percent is what they are.
Twenty-five percent, is it still that?
It's forty-five right now, yes, uh, but I understand that there's legislation at the congressional level that would increase it another ten percent. And that's a combination of federal and state.
The, the, the problem with that, the historic tax credits is, is that there's, you know, you have to follow the historic. You know what I mean, that, that's, that's the trick for some of these, some of these, you know, projects, is that if you want those historic tax credits for like the middle school, because it was used as a school until recently, and not repurposed, you know, like Claremont was at some point, you know, you have to sort of keep as much as you can, and that can add its own layer of complexity and cost of time and stuff, and so that, that makes it challenging, but it is a, it, it is a significant chunk of money.
Which, which gives, which, to, to his point, which, which gets me to the, it, it's a complicated process to navigate, and I understand that. It's, it would be less complex if there was support to, to do that, and I may be straying a little bit here. Is it feasible that we have a tax credit, someone who's well-versed in, in the tax credit process, to help the developer? Who's, who say, oh, I want, or, or someone who wanted to open and repurpose a building for a restaurant, to navigate them through, uh, the tax credit process?
Well, there is a local office in Salem, uh, that has staff, uh, from the Department of Historic Resources. And the gentleman that's there, um, I've known for years, and he can be very, very helpful to an individual looking at a particular building, tell them what he thinks the state agency will approve or disapprove. But then the actual processing of obtaining the tax credits and, and the kind of legwork that has to be done to create the entities to receive the tax credits, or to syndicate tax credits, gets pretty complicated, and there are lawyers that specialize, um, in that.
Nothing. And you want to.
So, you know, once somebody starts a project, you know, and, and those tax credits come on the tail end of a project, you know, that's when you get your money back, uh, as opposed to, it's kind of like grants that we get. You get your money after you've done the work, as opposed to being out, you know, cash there that can help you, uh, through the process.
So I'm, I'm probably getting in the weeds, but if, if, if there were, if there were, uh, something that we as a town long-term could do, whether it be some type of an initiative to, it, through our, through our, some type of, uh, I guess it's our, our U-DAG, or, or what have you, funding. Um, if there's some, something that we can offer there, even if it's just a template to help these folks navigate, um.
And we could certainly, you know, hold some seminars and invite people to come in, and have some people who are experts, you know, give some talks on some of this stuff, um, to encourage people, and, you know, tax credits can be used by single-family property owners, uh, you know, if somebody's restoring their house, and they can get the same tax credits that a, you know, a large business can.
Well, they, they can only get some of the tax credit. Cause there's a, the, I think it is the federal one that you need to have a, to be a business for, or this is the state one? One of the other, one of the other ones requires you to like generate income from the property. So you could restore it and rent it out, but you can't restore it and live in it and get that full forty-five percent.
The other thing that we have the advantage of here, and we have not publicized it as much, um, as perhaps we should, but we seem to spend the money pretty quickly, is the brownfields grants that we have. And in fact, we are working to try to get property owners for whom we've done the phase one and or phase two assessments, to agree to let us put signage on their property that in effect says, it's kind of like the City House, you can seal approval. You know, that you say this property has been assessed, because a lot of times, people will drive by an older property just because they'll say, oh, I'm sure it's got asbestos or lead, or something else, so they don't even look at it. Whereas we have the reports on a significant number of buildings, uh, and those reports have been funded with purely federal vouchers under our brownfields program, that could help a potential prospect look at those reports and say, well, I know this is here, or that is here. Uh, we've even helped a couple of properties, including Kalfi School, uh, to go through. Uh, we've even helped a couple of properties, including Calphi School, uh, to go through the historic designation process using those, uh, brownfields monies.
So, so, you know, with that and kind of zooming out for the co- purposes of a comprehensive plan, I mean, is there a way to, is there a way, or do we want to, I'm sure there's a way, is, do we want to capture, um, some of the, the programs or some of the, or at least some of the building blocks for how we maybe help navigate some of these, these processes? Or, and for, for, for our own use, if you look at, uh, what building is, is, what building is right across the track, where does that street turn? Turn right, right across the tracks there, where the old, the old Nehi building and I can't remember that.
Yeah, Commerce. Commerce.
Yeah. So if you take Commerce, for instance, there's several buildings in a row there that certainly I don't know that they've had grant, groundfill studies, but they're probably not going to go anywhere until they do, or, or have been remediated somewhat. So identifying those types of buildings and can, and since it is a lengthy process, you know, ensuring that we're continually identifying buildings is, and using that federal money as much as we can, as long as we can. You know, and when we're all gone, you know, there, there's still a focus to.
And we're doing that. There's a monthly group that was formed long before, um, I ever came to your community. It's, uh, the Brownfields Economic Development Committee, and we meet monthly. We've been meeting him on Zoom, um, for a long time now. And we identify potential candidates. Either that we approach a landowner to say, uh, would you like your property evaluated? Or we have some people who will contact, uh, Brady and say, I, I need to do something with this building. I'd like to do something with the building, but I'm not sure, uh, what's involved. We've also gone after and, and we brought in front of you all several what are called DBA grants. We've got one right now for the Randolph House and another for the Magnon site. And that's where we got the money candidly that is doing the remediation, bless you, um, of, uh, what I call the GCC site. The building, you know, the land next to, um, McCarthy Building. Um, so we can, you know, tap resources for individuals. And some of them, you know, people have a twinkling in their eye that they want to develop others. We say, hey, that looks like a good building. And we approach the owner to say, can we have your permission to go in and do an evaluation? We probably don't market that, um, as much, but we just got the three hundred thousand dollar grant last October. And we've already spent, I think it's like a hundred and ten thousand of that grant, uh, just with the investigations that we've done. And back when you all were looking at, I guess, various options for a public safety building, I know they did like a half a dozen buildings that they looked at, uh, as possible uses for that. And those studies are still there and available if anybody's interested in any of those buildings. So. Uh, we do have some resources and I'd say that with Brady's hiring and his, uh, charge to be the planner slash economic developer, you know, he's been busy, um, as have several of us, in trying to make these resources known and get signs out and do other kinds of things. But we are limited from a staffing, uh, standpoint about how much we, we can do at this point. So we want to grow the revenue of the town to then perhaps have additional staff resources to work on some of these things.
I definitely think development assistance is something that is a great sort of, you know, objective to put down to continue growing in our ability to provide that. I will say since we came on, uh, through Darlene's direction and sort of our, uh, experience, we are doing pre-development meetings and that's sort of that development assistance where we get the building official, fire marshal, myself, as the zoning administrator, uh, the town engineer, all in the room with the person and, and it's almost, uh, it fast tracks. Instead of them having to go from, to one person, then back to another, you know, we just go ahead and do that initial meeting, which has been really helpful. Um, and also just, I will tell you that we've had several prospects and individuals provide a similar feedback line, which is that they aren't being treated like this anywhere else. That they've been treated very well, they got information quickly, um, and they were very pleased. And I think what we're experiencing here and something as staff that I'm learning is there's a lot of things I don't know, of course. And it's just as we get these initial projects through and learn more through these processes, we'll start to have the map that we can then use to recreate and recreate and recreate and continue breeding more and more development. And I think it's once we, like you said, if we can get that map and have that to, to walk developers through, it, it definitely would be a tremendous assistance for us and developers to show them what it looks like. And I do want you to know that we are doing that, but of course we can always do a better job and, and could definitely provide more clarity.
And that's just it. I think you're, if, you know, you're doing everything that, that I, I know members of this council have, have wanted for a long time. And, and so we see it happening now. So really where, why I'm driving at that is, is that if, if you go away and, and then, we know Darlene's not going to leave for at least twenty years, but, but.
Ten is my max.
Should she, you know, should we all leave? It, do, is this something that, that we want to capture? Is this not the appropriate place to do it? I, I, I don't.
You mean, but you mean capture by like documenting it and making sure there's like handouts and templates and put up.
Because, because in my mind, what you're describing and developing takes time. You know, you're learning, you've got all the right people in the room, you're capturing information, you make a mistake, you back up, you capture more information. So you guys are gonna, we call it tribal knowledge for it. And, and if it's not documented, uh, uh, in some way, whether it's a comprehensive plan or if it's, if maybe, maybe that's not where it belongs. Maybe it's in, in other documentation. If, if you, if you don't capture it some way when, when one person leaves, then you, you lose that tribal knowledge.
And some of it is already being documented in simple things like forms. We're changing forms so that it's very clear what we're doing. And that's part of how the, this development consultation or what do we call it started? Because we realized we were unintentionally missing some things as were, you know, some small developers, because we weren't having those pre-conferences. But now we have in, in the forms that we use for building permits and inspections and everything, we're documenting and having those things so that if the next person comes in, that's the form they're going to use that hopefully they'll follow. But I understand also what you're saying and, for example, in the finance department, um, I'm having them go through and document all of their processes into a manual so that, and we're also doing cross-training, which hasn't been done before. They had, we had so much siloing, you know, that, that all of the knowledge on one thing was in one person. So when that person was sick or gone, we, nobody knew what to do. Um, and the development area, it's a little bit trickier, uh, because each situation is a little bit different. And what we can bring to the table is different depending on the physical location of property. Because we've got the enterprise zone, we've got the opportunity zone, we've got different credits. But we are putting together and know in a comprehensive way what those various programs are. And then we've got to steer people to them based upon what we know. But you're making a very good point. Um, that there needs to be institutional knowledge and not just individual knowledge about how things are.
I think it's a, I think it's a great point. And I'll say a perfect example, and this is someone I have to go to ten times a day, is our town engineer, Bill Pedego. He's worked here for thirty-three years. And he can tell you everything you need to know about every water line, every street. And I thought if Bill wasn't here, I'd be, I'd be lost, you know? Um, and so you're exactly right. And, and we are having those thoughts. Um, and I just think it's finding appropriate ways, especially in today's modern technical age, and having some of those important people like Mr. Pedego get information down, um, so that we can have it. And for example, for me, it, I've been here ten months and it's really taken me this long to get a grasp on the property owners, what the condition is, the square footage, what they would like to do if they want to sell, asking price.
To keep you around.
Well, it's taken a long time and, and I now find myself when Bill mentions or something, or someone else mentions something, I say, okay, I know that gentleman. I know he wants to sell the property for this. If he did, if someone did want to buy it, I know it's this much square footage. I know it had this roof issue, but you're right, that's all here. And it's, we need to make sure it's there just in case, of course, if I'm not here or Darlene or Bill, it, it, another, another person, you don't want to have to recreate that.
Right. I feel like some of what y'all, sorry. No, I was just gonna say the work.
It's a very strong point, very well received.
The work you guys are doing is valuable. I, I just don't want to lose it.
I think some of what y'all are discussing, I think we brought it forward, although again, I don't know if it fits into the, the, the comprehensive plan concept of, but it's just succession planning, you know, you know, of, of, you know, of, of the staffing side of, of, obviously that's what we're calling the backbone, what's going to get it done is what we do from the staff. And, and Darlene's mentioned it multiple times with help, as you mentioned, Bill, and well, and a lot of folks that, you know, that over that next five years, or maybe it crosses the bridges into the next comprehensive plan, but without an intentional, you know, you know, you know, moment to, to transfer knowledge, you know, over, that's, you know, it takes a five-year plan and, you know, to accomplish. And, and probably reaches into the next five-year plan to, to really say, how are we going to transfer that? You know, who's going to, who's next, who's next up, who's going to be ready to take those reins, who's going to? Or if we don't, if that person's not already in the house, what are we going to have to do, you know, to, to accomplish that? And so I don't, you know, I feel like to get us kind of, part of what you guys are talking about is just purely on, you know, the, a five-year, ten-year plan of what, because I know there's certainly a financial aspect anytime you're talking about you. You never have replacements trained if you don't have somebody, you know, in-house training, you know, to take the reins over something. If we know someone's planning on going somewhere or retiring, and we could stumble ourselves, you know, if we're trying to be aggressive. We certainly could stumble ourselves over, you know, a time period, you know, trying like, you know, just like Brady said, you know, you know, you're going to lose a year or two years, you know, just in getting somebody up and running. And we're talking about a five-year plan. So that, you know, you could lose your five-year plan and turn somebody over.
I, I think it's important we maintain a, I, I, we're a service organization, as I would do. That's why we're here to serve citizens of Pulaski. And I think in the past, in our history, and I experienced it early on, in, in my being here, we weren't a service oriented. Uh, I, I, uh, uh, place. So I, I think, I, I think we certainly are now. And, uh, I don't think we want to forget that. So again, I don't know if it belongs in the comprehensive plan. We, and by capturing all those things that we do to, to, to support, you know, developers and, and individual homeowners and, and, and just citizens at large, we're, we're helping them and we're helping the community. So I, I, I think however we capture that, I think it needs to be impol- it needs to be stressed. That, that's, that's why we're here, uh, and so that we don't forget that. And, and maybe that's more philosophical kind of, uh, uh, statement, but.
That was very practical.
I think it, I think it's important. So.
I know that was very development focused, sort of goal wise, accessibility, development support, succession planning, um, or, uh, building redevelopment. Would you, do you guys have any thoughts on infrastructure? Um, that's another big component of the comp plan that you would like to, to mention, uh, roadways, water and sewer, bridges?
Yes.
I mean, I, I, I think, you know, it feels like, I mean, I don't know with the last comprehensive, but it feels like the projects that need to be worked on are being worked on right now. I mean, we're, we're addressing some of our bigger water and sewer issues. I mean, obviously, you know, you know, there's, you know, there's continued, they're going to work on the dam at Haywood and they're going to, you know, we're replacing the filter beds at the water plant. I mean, I don't know, and we're redoing some of our water infrastructure with that Brooklyn project. I mean, it, it feels like, although it feels like some of that is sort of like, that's, you know, the water, you know, we, when we identify areas we want to do development in, then we make sure that we have the water infrastructure or the sewer infrastructure that we need to do that in. Um, and all of that seems like, you know, and, and besides just making sure that we're, you know, adequately paving the roads and stuff, having access, you know, my biggest thing. But I don't know if there's anything that I can think of that isn't being at least, you know, on the planning board. Uh, but I could be wrong. I mean, and I don't know if, if community members feel the same way. I mean, I know we got some, you know, people made some comments about why we weren't paving their road and why we're paving other roads. But it felt like at least the ones that I saw that we paved were the ones that desperately needed to be paved. Um, so I don't know how else we communicate that or do what to do with that, but it seems like we're, we're doing it in some sort of logical fashion. But I don't know if that's being communicated to the citizens.
I think a couple of meetings, you know, Darlene made a point about having a plan for when we were redoing water lines or certain utility lines or certain roads. And that way that those utilities could then come in and be updated at the same time or be added at the same time. So maybe go ahead and get in the plan or start developing the plan to when we're replacing water lines or when we're replacing those certain things to where we can then put it out to the utilities to let them know, hey, we're going to have the roads dug up here now, or we're going to have this happening now. So if you're going to put it in, you need to do it at this point.
That's particularly important with some of our water lines, because a lot of gas lines are located really fairly close. And so we have to be extra careful just in the replacement of the water line. It's a good time if the gas company needs to take a look at their line and see if they need to do something, to observe that and not come back right after we paid and say, well, now I need to do something. No, it's a good point.
Well, I said, I said a bunch of stuff, but then I, I've been thinking about this and I don't know if it's practical or not, but we have a lot of power lines that seem to get knocked down by trees and stuff like that. And I don't know how practical it is to bury those. I have no idea what the cost is.
You're very expensive.
I thought bigger it was, but it does seem like, you know, every, I mean, they're.
Very, very expensive.
They were replacing, um, a telephone, you know, power line telephone pole in my neighborhood. And there must have been seven Atco trucks out there. And I have, I have, I was thinking to myself, it cannot be, I mean, it can't be that much less, more expensive to bury these things. Uh, they do this every five to seven years, but maybe I'm wrong. Um, but I also think it would improve the appearance and the reliability of those lines. You'd not worry about somebody hitting them with a car or knocking them down with a tree.
There are communities that have actually created kind of like service districts.
Right.
Areas that want to have underground. And it's the people who live in that area that pay that additional cost. Because, um, the power company's not going to do it if they have the lines overhead.
No.
Without you bearing that additional cost. So that like, for example, this thirty acres that we know is in the process of being purchased and a plan for thirty plus homes, um, that developer has the opportunity while he's doing that work to underground those utilities. And it can be very inexpensive for him to do it at that time.
Right.
Um, it's also going to be responsible for a curve that are on sidewalk at the same time. So.
And, and I don't know if that's something that's required in our code, our zoning code that new cert- uh, developments of a certain size require burying the cables. But it does seem like that might be something to consider.
Well, I would just say I don't want this to necessarily be the last time. Maybe it's the first time, uh, for you all to give, uh, Brady and I and any others your thoughts and ideas. Uh, I would encourage you to help Brady get to four hundred in terms of his responses, uh, to the questions. Not just by yourself, but by people that you know that are really interested in the future of the town. It's, you know, a real opportunity for us to get that feedback and to get the kind of direction. Uh, there will be other discussions. I like the idea, Jamie, that you mentioned, and we'll see if we can't, uh, schedule something like that in the, in the fall as we move forward. Uh, the one thing I would say is that while comprehensive plans are to be updated every five years, my experience is that it takes almost two years to do a really good comprehensive plan update because of the desire and the need to have citizen involvement, uh, and opportunity. So if we don't make every five years, what's really important is that we get the direction set and support for that direction from the community, because it will involve change. And I haven't worked any place where change was readily accepted by those people. It's typical for people to accept change at first. But please, um, give us your ideas and thoughts beyond, uh, today um, as to where you'd like to see the town going in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you, Freddie. All right. So we'll move on to council comments.
I'm serious? I think I've talked enough, so.
I have just a question. On the GCC site, weren't we on a, a deadline that it had to be capped? I just a question, on the GCC site, weren't we on a deadline that had had to be capped? Are we getting close to that deadline?
September, but yes. We have done all of the primary work. The gentleman is creating forms to do the concrete work. And if it stops raining, although I understand it's supposed to rain for the rest of the week, his plan was to go ahead and start pouring, so we will make that deadline without any problem. But we did get an extension probably about four months ago to get us to September. We'll be okay. But thank you for asking, cause that's something we've stayed behind and actually have managed the money pretty well to be able to get the concrete. Now, I also mentioned to you all that in the list of, of items that we're funding through the American Recovery Act, uh, that we have hired or are hiring a firm that will come in and give us a professional plan for the skate park. It may be something that we'll have to do in stages in terms of its development or even use next year's money that will come to us as the second slug of this federal funding to actually do some improvements to it, uh, to the site itself. But we can go ahead and lay the concrete now with the, the money that we got through VBAC and then add improvements as we go on. That same company's also going to give us their thoughts on a mountain bike park that we would like to see if it's possible at the community garden site. Because it's ideal, given the flooding that we have from the creek and everything, to have something like that. And speaking to the issues of outdoor amenities, uh, those are two things that we think could bring some significant people into the town.
Mr. Rafferty?
I do. Uh, I had an opportunity to ride around with my town manager and a couple of people the other day and look at some, uh, spots. I wanna thank you for that. Any of the council people that has a chance to hook up with the town manager and a couple of department heads, we rode around and we really found some really, uh, great things. We even looked at the bridge over at Mike that he had brought up, the, the bridge museum that's full under, uh, the water and it's, there's not a lot of space for water flowing or anything. It's very, so we did get out and physically look at that. So looked at a couple of houses going up Washington, found out they was already in the court. They tore down so the citizens can, you know, know what we got. But if you guys get a chance, that's, that's probably a great thing to do and to your concerns to her and then, uh, she can take care of it. Second thing is, uh, to the fire department who's very busy yesterday and this morning.
Five o'clock, it's five o'clock.
They had a house here, it's been one early this morning behind McDonald's. I got a chance to go out and talk to them this morning about five on my way to work. So please relate to the fire chief and the police department, what a great job they've done. They've been kinda busy going on. Third final thing is, uh, somebody like this right here. Uh, I sat down, had a chance to talk with a couple of the board supervisors, uh, over the weekend, a place with, uh, and I, 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 I would like for the town manager, get everybody's opinion on it. It's time that we take a look at a moderate, modern firing range for the police department, being for the sheriff department, being for everybody involved. Sheriff Department, Police Department, RU Dublin, everybody that uses these firing ranges. What I would like for you to do is send a letter to the county administrator, Mr. Sweet, requesting a meeting sometime in the future with the board of supervisor, the sheriff, you, uh, you, the chief, a council person, the town double, same way. RU the same way, the academy the same way. And we can meet at the academy. Going forward, some of you have never been there, going forward on these ranges, they're, they're really terrible. You'll ask the PDX that has, uh, a, a great range. Some of the things that Mr. Guthrie said, uh, locations. My number one location would be our firing range up here. Number two would be at the academy.
I think the academy had a pretty good setup, they don't.
They use the one at Sheriff's Department. We, we, we have like four or five facilities that use that one. You'd have to go up and kinda look at it, there's really not expansion there. It's, uh, it's really not. You guys have the best place for the least amount of expense. You already have the ranges and modernize it. The state police have one of them. Uh, it's really gotta see, it's half outside, half inside. And the targets come to you, you're not walking down range. This is a safety issue more. Walking down range is terrible, but it comes to you now. And you also have a rifle range. You would have a building for tactical, uh, for classroom settings. And it's, you land, the most expensive things are there, you land, you have it up here. You already have the ranges. So everybody would be involved in this thing and it would be one neutral site. As Mr. East brought up a few years ago, the citizens of this county are begging for a place to go fire weapons. You, you would have an opportunity to have a public firing range. A lot of things have to be worked out here. Just can't open it up, let people go up and be wet. You'd have to have a range instructor. With this range instructor, you would have an entry fee. An entry fee would pay for this instructor, but not only that, you have Mr. Miller who teaches concealed weapon. He has thirty, twenty-five, thirty people in his class or pack. They're packed. So they're, they need a place to go do this stuff in a controlled environment. But your range would be very modern for domestics, for terrorist attack. We have, we don't have this stuff. We don't have a place to go practice in a school shooting. You, you, police, your, your ranges should be set up, classroom. You don't, I've been in these environments, you, you don't have that. What we do is we, we talk about it. Well, that ain't worth a crack when it goes hell and back. You better know what you doing and you better know where you going. It's not if, it's when. It gonna happen. So we need these training facilities, but I want your opinion, your chief. I want the sheriff's opinion, you know, uh, chief of police. Let them, you know, set it up. How, how do you want these targets set up? You know, how do you want the range set up? You want a one-hundred-yard sniper range? You have that here, it's already there. All right, it's built, nobody's gonna build around. But I would like you to send a letter to John to set us up a meeting in the near future. And I would be, I would like to be the council to go with you and the sheriff would go with them, Jill would go with us, or whoever the chief is at that time. And have a meeting in ne- in near future and have a range that we can all be proud of. That, thank you.
Mr. East?
Yeah, I'll, I'll keep it brief. As you guys know, I'm, I, I sit in on the meetings with the friends of Peak Creek, New River Conservancy. They're doing a full detailed study of our creek and, and the flooding and, and a lot of other issues. Just a, it, it's a pretty comprehensive job they're doing. At one time, I, I guess it was just last year, they presented some, some kind of, some highlights on what we can do to potentially mitigate flooding. There's a price tag attached to everything. So what I've asked is, is, is if they could come to us and maybe give us something comprehensive, I mean, something that we can act upon. And the reason is, whatever happens in this creek, if, if, we're talking potentially millions of dollars over a long period of time. But there, there may potentially be some smaller items that we can tackle to, uh, to help mitigate the flooding. And if I'm not mistaken, it, it should fall under infrastructure.
Yes, and in fact, we've got a couple of items in that American Recovery list of things that we're gonna be doing.
Okay.
And we did, we were visited just last week, um, by the Army Corps.
Okay.
Who have, uh, offered some assistance to us on a couple of items. And I know some of the, um, I can't remember the, the name of the equipment, but some of the equipment items that Kathy and others had suggested we have in order to do better measurements are listed and will be purchased in that regard. We also will be doing.
So we were gonna be doing some GIS stuff.
Right, and we were gonna do some stormwater studies and INI. All of those things are on our list between this year's money and we haven't given you a list for next year's money yet, but we have a long list of things that we wanna get done. And I think, uh, I believe we sent that to you, um, by email because you were not at the last meeting.
Yeah, and I've, I've reviewed that. But what I was interested in is just to, I just wanna mention it because I'd like for you guys to keep it in mind going forward because, you know, this year's art money is, is, is pretty well consumed, as I understand. But next year, we should have some actionable items and I think it's something we really need to consider. Just the creek walls, for instance, that's a, you know, and the deterioration there and there's, and then, and then a lot of the bank erosion, I think those things.
I've noticed that, that down, down the creek from town, it's, I mean, from downtown, it's gotten, it's bad in some places.
And, and it's only gonna continue to get worse. So I think at some point, we're gonna have to commit to doing whatever we can, at least starting that process.
Evidently, uh, we have just, uh, been approved to go to a, kind of a next step in the process with the Army Corps to get their assistance on some dear projects. So that was part of the reason for the visit last weekend. Bill did go around, uh, with the Army Corps, there were two representatives from the, I guess it's Huntington, West Virginia is the location of that office, looking at some of the projects. So.
And, and I know there's probably, there's probably additional monies out there that can be found.
And that's part of what we wanna get.
Certainly wanna do that first, but.
Definitely.
That's all I have.
Thank you. Only thing, and I just forgot to mention, it's actually more tied to Brady's conversation before, but I don't know if you, you or Brady have seen the, there was a study done, probably somewhere close to when I first came on council, that they did a, a study on Jackson Park itself. It was, it was part of the study, talking about some different things that could be done in the downtown area. So there was more to it, but there was some interesting thoughts, or at least that I've always, uh, continued to remember about a redesign of Jackson Park, you know, that included just some different thoughts of things like, you know, taking the water feature from being a water fountain to being a splash pad or something of that nature, or something a little more, maybe just updating that gets used for, I think you've mentioned, you know, that you, all the concerts and stuff that was at Jackson Park were always shutting down the road and, and using the municipal building. And, and I think that, you know, suggested making more of a, you know, a, you know, a, a feature for where concerts would be from the park area with, you know, it's just kinda an updated design of making use of that very large park space in the middle of downtown. So I just think is, you know, I think that, that'd be an interesting to look at anyways. I don't think that that necessarily wasn't an exact thought of anything. It was just a opening up maybe the thoughts of what could be, you know, if we're tearing up streets and sidewalks and, and different things and looking at waterways and.
We do have a splash park on our list of, uh, things for next year's money because we found a couple places in the area that have put them in, uh, relatively inexpensively. So we're gonna be investigating that. I've got some staff assigned to look into that for next year's money as again of something that could be not only beneficial to our residents, but opportunities to bring other people into the town to, to see things, so. But I haven't heard about the redesign of Jackson Park. I'll see if I can find that stuff.
I can't remember.
Yeah, I, I, I've seen it. I'm, I, I need hard pressed to find it. So, I mean, it was a, it was a very extensive renovation.
I think Jerry, Jerry Frasayton was the one that did it.
Yeah, I mean, it was a professional drawing kind of thing. I think it was more conceptual.
Yeah, well, yeah, there wasn't.
But those thinking of, if we're gonna have out, we, one thing we do need to think about with that, if we're gonna do that is, is restroom facilities. Cause there isn't a restroom facility at Jackson Park right now. And if we're gonna spend some money on putting in some facilities, that's gonna be a component of it, I, I, you know. It, it would be, I think it would be money well spent, my personal opinion.
We just need to have better use of our facilities cause, you know, the ones that we have over by the train station have been vandalized so much that, uh, they really were reluctant to keep them open. But I insisted that they be open, uh, at least during the daylight hours, you know, Monday through Sunday. And now that we have the flea market on Saturdays, it becomes even more, you know, critical for the weekend. So, uh, there are some challenges with having public restrooms that are not, um, managed around the clock. But I, I understand what you're saying. And in fact, uh, some of the issues with even performances at the, the park have been, you know, where are the restroom facilities? And, you know, I've kind of said they're not gonna be town hall. So, you know, there have to be portages and I think people are really, really rethinking that whole issue about portages, given the COVID environment that we have been in, that we continue, you know, to be in. So I think the world is changing around a lot of those things, but I understand what you're talking about and it really is something that we need to have a plan for in the future, particularly if we get back into a lot of event activity.
That's all I have. Number twelve, managers report.
I'm not gonna say anything more. I think I have contributed, or one, I probably should have. But I appreciate what you all have given us as some, uh, real ideas about the future.
All right, so that takes us to, I guess, for, for everybody to decide if, uh, we have, we have two more items that were finalized in closed session to either move those to the next meeting or finish them out.
Are they, are they timely? Is it a timely issue or?
It probably depends on, not us, but other folks. Some people would like answers sooner rather than later.
Everybody likes answers sooner rather than later.
I know, I know, so.
Unless it's bad news, I wanna hear.
Well, let's, we'll stay, we'll stay. We'll stay short and get done.
Why don't you give me fifteen more minutes? Why's, why don't we say?
I don't like this.
Yeah.
All right, so.
Go lead the close, I'll do that, thanks.
Yep.
Do you need a motion to go back in?
I don't have to do the, I think so, right?
Is it one and four?
All right. May I have a motion entered in closed session, uh, for the following two matters. One item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven eleven eight three, acquisition of disposition of public owned property. And one item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven eleven eight eight, consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal management, applying legal advice and such.
Don't move.
Boy, that was fast.
Second. We need a roll call, please.
Roll call. Mr. Penn? Uh, Mr. Dawson?
Hi.
Mr. E?
Hi.
Mr. Ryan? Mr. Paul?
Hi.
Hi.